He and Frank says they're ready to go. Oh, now we do. Okay, bye.
I want to welcome everybody to our Des Moines City Council meeting. Prior to the start of tonight's meeting, we're going to have some very special awards. Jason Van Essen from our Community Development Department is going to go over them, but we're going to talk about historic preservation and all the great work that's been done by people to design and not only new, but adaptively reuse lots of great places in and around Des Moines. So Jason, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor County. Every year, the Historic Preservation Commission solicits nominations for historic preservation projects. They're well-done and deserving of credit to just kind of thank them for spending that little extra effort to preserve Des Moines' history. So we have three awards tonight, and I have a few pictures of each project, and we'll get started here. The first award is for the Liberty Building, the Hyatt Hotel. It's an adaptive reuse project at 418 Sixth Avenue. If the party that's here to receive the awards today wants to go ahead and come forward, they may do so. That's the Liberty Building Development Group was the developer. The architect is G.Y.A. Architecture, Inc. The property was built in 1924. Here's a few before pictures. So here's the building currently. The renovation included interior renovation of portions of the first floor and then floors three through eight for a 93-room hotel. Kind of the primary reason for the award from the Historic Preservation Commission's standpoint is the sensitive entrance. They had to make the building function for the hotel while still respecting the architecture of the original building. You can see that the building was originally developed with a main entrance in the center, but they did something that worked, respect the building, and still allowed the Hyatt to have their own entrance. So I'm going to flip through the pictures and hand out the awards.
All right. Let's see. Liberty Building Development Group is our... I don't know if you've got... Right here. I think it's...
Our next item is the same architects, that one.
All right. What do we... We'll get a picture with our chair of our historic...
Sounds good.
Board?
While they're shaking hands, this is Susan Holder-Nes. She's the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission.
[laughter]
All right. Award number two is the Oliver Herricks Post Office Building, otherwise known as Aqualand, 3606 Avenue. This is a commercial interior/exterior rehabilitation. The developers, Parks Area Foundation, architect G.Y.A. Architecture. And then on this one, we also have a certificate for the contractor who worked diligently on the project, that's Contractor Group, Inc. So here's a historic photograph of the building located on the corner of Sixth and Euclid. This is the picture of the building before they started work. And here's some after photographs. You can see that they spent a lot of attention to detail of looking at that historic photograph and restoring the exterior back to its 1919 original exterior look, including the redevelopment of that corner entrance that sits at an angle to the intersection. So I'd like to invite the group to come forward and receive their certificates.
Susan, we're up again.
While they're doing so, I'd like to point out that this was really a community effort. Parks Area Foundation has been working diligently on this one and worked really hard with the city to try to make this project to go and did a great job.
Let's give him a big hand.
The developer is owned by Salisbury House Foundation, OPN Architects as the architecture firm, if they want to come forward and receive their award. Everybody, I think, in the community is familiar with the Salisbury House. It was built in the 1920s. Over the years, they've been before us to receive awards for a lot of exterior renovations. They've worked diligently to try to get the building shored up, get new mechanical in it. Now they were able to move forward and look at some of the interior work that needed to be addressed. Over the years, the interior limestone walls had been slowly getting soiled, dirt, there's salt buildup, and so they had to figure out a way to clean that up and restore the interior. So they were diligently to do very low-impact cleaning methods. And these are some before photographs. You can kind of see the discoloring in the photographs from the years of buildup. And here we have some after. You can see the restoring of the brighter color of those walls, the Great Hall and the other public areas within the interior. Oops, sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right. We have the work of Salisbury House Foundation and OPN Architects. Thank you so much and for the good work that's been done up there. So... We got you in my... [laughter] Okay. We have one more presentation to make, and I'd like to have Mary. We celebrate a universal hour of peace, and I would like to... Mary, if you could kind of tell us what's going on and how you're going to handle it. And we've got a special proclamation for that presentation.
Nice to see you all here. I'm Mary Hammersley. I'm on the faculty at the School of Metaphysics, and this is Jeremy Youngers. He's one of our students. And we ask people at the New Year, the hour from 11:30 p.m. to 12:30 a.m. over the New Year, to bring in the New Year with a consciousness of peace. Because peace influences us within ourselves, within our families, within our communities, and over the world. And at the School of Metaphysics, we teach about positive thinking and how the thoughts that we have each day, that we populate our mind with, have a profound influence. And that's why we're asking people all over Des Moines, all over the world, to read the Universal Peace Covenant at midnight of the New Year into 2012. And I've brought some Universal Peace Covenants if you might be wanting to participate. And you can also get them online at peacedome.org. And we'd love to have everyone participate. It will make the world a better place.
All right. Thank you. The United States of America has historically been a melting pot where people of all nationalities, religious faiths, and cultures come together as one and as the strength of our great city rests in the cooperation of the community and of its citizens. And whereas our only hope of establishing peace among diverse people is through recognizing our connectedness and common dream of peace on earth. And whereas the first day of the New Year typically denotes hopeful expectation and positive resolve in the hearts and minds of our citizens. And whereas the School of Metaphysics, a worldwide organization founded in our country to promote peace, understanding goodwill through teaching that living peaceably begins by thinking peacefully, has called for a universal hour of peace over the midnight hour, December 31, 2011 to January 1, 2012. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of the Des Moines City Council and our citizens, do hereby proclaim Saturday, December 31, 2011, at 11:30 p.m. as the universal hour of peace, when the people of our great community might stand united in common purpose, committing themselves in thought and action so peace may move across the face of the earth in the dawning of the New Year. So thank you very much for your efforts, and we'll all hope for peace in the New Year. Appreciate it very, very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We have enough. Should we go ahead with the Municipal Housing Agency Board? Do you want to see if Brian's back there? Oh, Brian's right there. Very well. Well, maybe? Yeah? Okay. Let's call to order the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting and ask the clerk to call. Roll, please.
County?
Here.
Moore? Grease? Mahaffey? Hensley? Meyer? We have a quorum.
Item number two is approving, and Board Member Moore is here to approve the conveyance of 3600 and 3602 Southeast 11th Street and 5910 and 5912 Southwest 12th Street and 5918 and 5920 Southwest 12th Street and 1170 and 1172 Ninth Street and 1176 and 1178 Ninth Street and 428, 430 East Leach Avenue and 43, 343 and 345 East Creston Avenue and 922 and 927 Emma Avenue to the Community Housing Initiatives, Inc., CHI Board Communication Number 11-750. That's approving that conveyance. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on that item tonight before our Municipal Housing Agency Board? Seeing none, could we have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Yet in passes. It's the only item on our agenda this evening. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? We sit adjourned. Thank you. The dedication this evening, it's going to be by our own city council member, Chris Coleman. We'd ask those that are going to participate with us that you stand at this time.
As we begin our meeting tonight, we ask the Lord to look down on us as we begin to conduct our business representing the citizens of Des Moines in all of our work tonight. Thank you for an outstanding 2011 and all the blessings that have been bestowed upon the city of Des Moines and our citizens. Thank you for the people who have worked each day to make our city a better place. The awards that we have achieved and been recognized with are a testament to our employees' strong work ethic, creativity, and efforts to make us the best possible place to live and work and grow and raise a family. So as we conclude 2011, we thank you for everything that happened and ask for your blessings on us as a council and our staff and our team as we prepare for an even better 2012. Amen.
Call the meeting of the Des Moines City Council, December 19, to order and ask the clerk to take a roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ask on item two to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
I'll move.
Item three is to approve the consent agenda. And are there no items pulled tonight?
There's one item. 4B.
All right. Item 4B. These are items three through 41 this evening, and Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak on item 4B. And Councilmember Moore and I vote no on item five. Are there any other items this evening that anyone in the audience would like to pull for clarification or further discussion? All right. Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance, please? Then move.
Seven yes?
All right. Takes us to item 4B. That's approving the alcoholic beverage license applications for the filing. And B is Ingersoll at 3711 Ingersoll to see liquor license. Mrs. Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant for 4B, Ingersoll Dinner Theater, in the audience? Do you want to come forward so I can ask you a few questions, please? Right up here. So you're Keisha Barnes?
Yes.
And your address is?
30... Oh, excuse me. The business is 3711 Ingersoll, but my address is 2323 East Porter Avenue, number 77.
Okay. And can you tell me, have you had experience running a restaurant bar before?
No, I haven't.
And what are your plans for this location?
My plans for the locations are kind of more of a... It's kind of a diverse approach to mature entertainment and family business orientation to, like, old movies and popcorn. Also, we would offer hamburgers and hot dogs and french fries for those kind of events and also for... Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Also, I am a teacher, a middle school teacher, and so it would be nice to have a venue where we could have performances. Like, we have a talent show next month. That would be a great place. Not a huge moneymaker, but for food, we could make some money on that. Also, there are local comedians I've been in contact with that we could have as a regular kind of a rotation. I'd like to keep that as, like, the third Wednesday or the third Thursday, maybe. Oh, that's the plan. Third Thursday's comedians. First Saturdays would be more of... Well, it's kind of complicated, but just having comedians, family-oriented.
So what are the hours of operation going to be then?
The hours of operation during the weekends would be any time from 9 to about 1:45. I think it'd be a good time to close, so we have time to get everybody out and do everything. But then during the week on, which would be mostly Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, the hours of operation would be 6 to about 10.
And so do you plan on being onsite during all the hours of operations?
Yeah, for most of them. Yes, yes.
And do you have any connection with the previous owners of any of the previous owners in the last two years?
No, I do not.
Okay. And so how did you decide to go into business at the Ingersoll Dinner?
Well, it's been kind of a... It's been a project hobby thing for me for a while, an idea to open up my own place. And it just was a good opportunity. I saw that it was open, and I have saved some savings, and it looks like we'll try to make a go of it, so.
And now you're signing up, indicating that you're going to have 50% food, 50% bar?
Yes.
And you'll be able to do that without the grease trap and the other issues?
We will be able to, short-term. WRA, we've been in contact with them. So for short-term, yes, but I have some of my savings that I've been saving up to start the business and some loans that I have. We'll cover that in 60 days. Cover the installation within 60 days.
And you'll be able to do that within 60 days?
Well, yes. Yes, I have the... My loan is approved, and I have some of my savings. Yep.
Tell me why... Help me feel comfortable why I should be supportive of this, because we've had nothing but problems at that location. You have no previous experience, no track record, and I'm not feeling comfortable.
Okay.
Oh, help me here.
Well, it's really... I mean, it's, again, a business venture that I just felt would be... As a mature person, a city of Des Moines, there's not a lot of entertainment that's affordable on a consistent basis as far as comedians, open-mic night, even the Blues on Grand closing. I think with some of the connections that I have for music, I mean, we could really bring some music. And again, you have some cocktails, you have hamburgers and hot dogs. That would be a great chicken fingers and french fries. That'd be a great venue to present that. We've done some painting, have renamed it the Marquee. I mean, it has its own, hopefully, new identity. Now, to actually change in the actual Marquee on the outside will be quite an investment, but I can worry about that later. But for now, really, just music and comedians and open-mic night, I think, for poetry, and that'll be fun. And again, secondary and not as much of a moneymaker. Again, another venue for my middle school students and high school students. And of course, I know lots of, you know, school events that we could hold there. Again, not making a lot of money at the door, but certainly, and of course, no alcohol. But of course, but with food, we could make some with our audience for family and friends and grandparents coming for that.
I'm going to look to legal. Do we have an option of issuing this on probation for six months?
The city cannot mandate a probationary license. An applicant can request a shorter license, but the city cannot mandate a probationary license.
But we can request that in six months we go in and do an audit of the alcohol and the food?
At any time that there's a reasonable concern, that the city has reason to believe that the food and alcohol are inconsistent with the actual sales that are going on, then an audit could be requested or information could be sought from the applicants.
I'll go ahead and move approval.
Can I ask one question first, Christine? When you operate it and as the license holder, you know you're responsible for the facility and all the behavior, even if you have an outside act or you mentioned special events renting the facility. Do you have... Do you anticipate, like, any other entity regularly using it to host their own events? Have you brokered any deal with anybody, or has anybody approached you, like, we'd rent it once a month or every other weekend?
Not yet. But that's... I am looking for, you know, kind of having, again, with that regular schedule of kind of having... Just reaching out. I think a lot of people don't really know about the place in general anymore, especially my generation doesn't really... It's not really... It's not on the map, so to speak. And so really, to raise awareness and have some advertisement, I think, once we get our names out there and have comedians to have some successful nights, certainly with... So that's part of my business plan, of course, absolutely, to have some regularity with certain customers. It would be nice to have, like I said... It would be nice to have, like I said, certain, with the local circuit of, even there are drama acts that are, that, that really don't have, they're not really large scale, but they're smaller scale, and they would like to come up and do like short plays and, for adults mostly, but, you know, that kind of a thing. I think with some regularity and some, some success, I think I could build that. Also, there are local businesses along, just right even along Ingersoll with the Neighborhood Association, like there's a tanning place across the street and they would, you know, they've expressed interest in, in having, you know, every other month, having, sorry, every other month having a, an employee party, you know, it's kind of a thing, that kind of a thing to celebrate, you know, employees.
Have you sat down and had conversations with Ingersoll Business Association?
Not yet. That is part of my plan, though, yes.
North of Grand, you've not met with any of the neighborhood groups?
No, not yet.
You have a lot of work to do.
I do. But it came up open, literally, the, I think it was the twenty-ninth, and I saw it on the thirtieth, and so it's been really just trying to get paint and cleanup and all kinds of things, just literal things, and ready for inspection really has been a major focus, too. So.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move forward to approve the liquor license, but with reservation.
Okay.
If there's anything at all that happens as a result of, you know, it not being adhered to properly, you'll be, I'll be the first one that you're going to hear from.
Okay.
Because we've just had lots of issues there, and I think it's as much a problem with the landlord.
Oh.
So I just am really nervous about this over there. And ask that we monitor the food and alcohol as well.
Okay.
So I would suggest you make contact with all the businesses and neighborhood associations as well.
I will, I definitely will.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak on this item? Item's been moved. Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
All right, that completes the consent agenda. For those of you, I might as well tell you that item forty-one has been withdrawn. Item forty-four has been withdrawn. Item forty-five has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Item forty-five is the Capstone Ventures LLC to rezon property in the central business district for mixed use. The applicant has withdrawn the request to rezon the property. Forty-six is the, a rezoning at fourteen thirty-five University and the request from the applicant to continue to January ninth, the council meeting, and it looks as though it's been withdrawn, however. So, at any rate, before we move into our items, city manager has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight is the last regular council meeting for the year 2011, but it's also the last regular council meeting for one of our longtime employees and one of our best employees, Gary Fox, is set to retire here in a few days, and he's in the audience and. I don't, I don't need to tell all of you, but Gary has been just a great traffic engineer, is a great traffic engineer, and has done great work for the city and its citizens, and we will miss his intelligence and his fine work for the city. So, Gary, congratulations and have a great retirement.
I was, I was with somebody the other day who was saying, I, I started thinking about the city, and I think every route that you would take through the city is quicker today to do and safer than it was twenty years ago. And they started listing all the little routes that people take to get from one place to the other, and it is a much more manageable city than, than we were even fifteen, twenty years ago, so good work.
Gary, thank you for your many years' worth of service, now of myself, but from the whole council and from our citizens. Thank you. Let's move on. We have item forty-two, which is from councilmember Brian Meyer to speak regarding changing the signs on Highway Five bypass from southeast Sixty-Fourth Street to Army Post Road. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a couple people come to me and ask about this. When you go north and you go south on the Highway Five bypass, there are signs that say Army Post Road exit, whatever the exit is, and then a few miles down the road, it's posted as southeast Sixty-Fourth, which is actually Army Post Road, but nobody knows what southeast Sixty-Fourth is. And so the question for the city manager, and I'll refer to the city manager's office, is is there some way to get those signs changed to say Army Post Road instead of southeast Sixty-Fourth? There's one going north and one going south entrances, so unless there's any questions, I'll refer this to the city manager. I know it's an important item and everything.
You know, we have had more trouble getting the signage right on that. It's just very confusing to everybody.
Councilman Meyer, councilmember, this is really a great idea. I think it requires the consent of IDOT because Highway Five is a state highway. We'd be happy to work on it. It is a great idea and will help get people in and out of our city, so we'll get busy on it and report back to you.
Thanks.
Great idea.
Seven yes?
All right, item forty-three is a communication report, this one, item forty-three, from Robert Conley of six seventy Foster Drive to speak regarding the Hampton Inn project. Mr. Conley in the audience. Is he not, we may be moving a little faster in case he shows up, we'll allow him to.
I'll move to receive and file the information.
Yep.
If he shows up, you're going to let him address us, councilman Frank?
He would like to.
I would say, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, he advised, Terry Vorbrook had a conversation with him earlier today, and he advised Terry that he wasn't coming, but.
He was not?
But it hasn't been formally withdrawn, so you're wise to keep it open at least until you adjourn.
Mr. Moore, Mr. Mahaffey?
Seven yes?
All right, let's, item fifty is regarding a recommendation from the city manager regarding a negotiation and preliminary terms of agreement with SDG Mace Ridge Properties LP for redevelopment of South Ridge Mall, council communication number eleven dash seven six eight. Mr. Manager, would be okay, Brian, do you want to say a couple of things about this?
Well, I can briefly address and then turn over to the city manager if we miss something. This right now is to confirm the council's commitment, I think it was put forth by Economic Development, that we look forward to working with Mace Ridge and with the other entities down there and helping out where we can to make that entire block there, that entire area, a really a first-class area. And as many of you know, a couple weeks ago, we did a big press announcement on bringing in the indoor soccer and barnstormers football practice facility as well as DMAC, and at the same time, they unveiled the, the new plans for South Ridge Mall, which is going to be a different look, it's going to be more of a strip mall type look, but it's, the intention is to make it leaner and, and more efficient and hopefully bring some more national chain retailers in to fill in the rest of the space and, but this right here, this item is a commitment to work with Mace Ridge and South Ridge Mall to make those things happen. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, councilmembers. This is, this is really a terrific initiative, and you think back not too long ago when this council took some great action with regard to Merle Hay Mall, and that action, I think, was really instrumental in allowing Merle Hay Mall to turn around and that whole neighborhood. This is going to happen a little bit differently, but it's similarly important. The council has already taken action to establish a tax increment district out here. That can be one of the foundation pieces that allows this area to rejuvenate. But at present, you've got DMAC that's talking about making a major commitment there. The Iowa Soccer Association just announced, is what Brian talked to, their plans for facility at this location in conjunction with the Iowa Barnstormers, and then Mace Ridge, who is the owner of the facility, has begun work on sort of redesigning the facility there. It is really a great opportunity. It's going to be a different facility, as Mr. Meyer said, but this is the time that I think the developer and the community really need to come together and see what we can do to make this something that's really a great asset for the south side. And have you keep in mind that just down the street from here is the vastly improving Blank Park Zoo, again, something that you made happen by your commitment to that facility. So I think there are great things in the future for this part of the city. You might recall the term super block, which really encompassed all of this area. So we're, we're at the front end here with respect to these actions in South Ridge. The item on your agenda tonight is not really asking you to take any formal action to approve anything, but we would very much appreciate your comments and direction to pursue the matter aggressively, which is our intention, but there are just a lot of different things that we can do. I'm really excited about the prospect of turning this into something that's an asset for this part of the city and hopefully council will agree with that. It is, it is really novel, in my experience, to see the conversions of so many important features at one point in time, and it's, it's just a wonderful opportunity for us that I think we need to take advantage of. So with that, Mr. Meyer, councilmembers, I just would ask for any comments and direction that you want to provide to us to keep the ball rolling here.
It's my understanding, Rick, that Economic Development is working on a plan, a economic assistance plan, and that will, is that going to come back to us, or how's that going to work?
Mr. Meyer, councilmembers, yes. Rita Connor, Terry Vorbrick, and their colleagues are working on a, an economic development plan. We don't really yet have the details of what that would encompass. We're really in the very early stages here, we're not even sure what the ask would be at this point, but it is clearly something that we would be working on and would be bringing it back to council for your further direction on the matter as soon as we have some details on what it would look like and what would be involved in it.
Thanks.
Any councilmembers have any comments, any suggestions?
This is, this is moving very quickly, too. What you'll see in the next couple of months is a total transformation of the area just from the mall perspective, so.
I just, I went out to the press conference and wanted to compliment Brian, Rick was there and others from the city, so was Senator McCoy, who has been very helpful on the south side, and I think it's great. I echo what Rick said about Merle Hay Mall. Changing this up a little bit provides real promise for retail in that whole area of Des Moines, and I sensed a whole lot of energy for something big happening, something new happening, so I, when we were out there. So congratulations, Brian.
Thank you. I'll move, move fifty.
Seven yes?
Item fifty-one is approving a municipal service center master plan and authorizing city manager proceed with an RFP for design and construction services for Phase One of the project and directing staff to prepare the PUD conceptual plan and initiate the rezoning, council communication number eleven dash seven seventy, and A is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Manager, any comments?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this has been before you before. This is a landmark decision tonight. This evening, we're asking you to approve the municipal service center master plan. We're asking you to authorize us to proceed with a PUD concept plan. That's really the rezoning process, and we're also asking for your permission to proceed with an RFP for designing construction services for the Phase One construction of the facility. It continues to be, in my mind, one of the most important initiatives we have, not only because the city needs these facilities to accommodate our operations, but even more important because it represents for us the potential to move to a far more efficient arrangement for the operation of our field operations. Public Works is going to be directly impacted, Parks is going to be impacted, Fleet Services, other city operations as well. But the ability to have all of those services concentrated in one area, I, I just can't begin to tell you the positives that will accrue out to the city and the taxpayer over many years. If you have more questions, the staff has spent countless hours pursuing this. Larry Hallson, my office, has really been the lead coordinator on the work to date, and I'm sure Larry would be happy to come forward and answer any detailed questions that you might have. But I strongly recommend this to you, even in tight budgetary times, it's these kinds of initiatives that will serve the city and its taxpayers well over the long haul, and I, I hope it's something that you, you are comfortable with going forward with this time. I certainly think it's good for the city, so. Mayor and council, we'd be happy to answer questions if you have further.
I just have one, Mr. Manager, and it's sort of one that I continue to say, I hope that in the design phase, that we recognize the, the potential around our city and to protect our resources from flooding and other natural disasters, and that in that design phase, we will appropriately address those concerns that, to protect our resources from, from possible inundation by water or other things.
Mr. Mayor, you really make a terrific point, and it's one that we've attempted to be very mindful of. Bill Stowe, as you know, is our, our expert on all matters related to flooding, and I'd ask Bill just to make a few comments about how we can approach this to ensure its, its safety from potential flooding in the future. Mayor, county, members of the city council, Bill Stowe, Public Works, and I'm, I'm happy to share the expertise that the city manager has, has described with both the city engineer and the community development director and their staffs. Mr. Mayor, this is a, a matter that you've raised with me personally on a number of occasions, and we certainly appreciate the point you're making about the vulnerability of flooding and the need in this municipal service center to be responsive to the greater community needs. We in Public Works are working very closely with the community development and the engineering staff, as well as consulting engineers, to develop a strategy that has us looking on building standards, ingress and egress into the area of the city in the event of extraordinary flooding, to ensure that exactly the concerns that you continue to raise are addressed, and we're confident that we're going to be able to work that through in a way that'll be satisfactory, not only to you, but to the community at large.
All right, any other questions, anybody? Seeing none, does someone want to move this item?
Move fifty-one.
And fifty-one A?
And fifty-one A.
Seven yes?
All right. We've got a couple of minutes here. I would suggest that we have a motion quickly to recess the city council and convene as Board of Health.
Move.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? We now sit as the Board of Health. We convene this evening to, number one, approve the legal department to proceed with court actions seeking the authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is two thousand and seven Des Moines Street, it's a main and garage structure. B is four thirteen Shawnee Avenue, it's a main structure and a garage structure again. C is eleven twenty-four thirteen Streets, a main structure. And D is two seventy-five E Seventeen Streets, a main structure and an accessory structure. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on any of these four items that are scheduled to, our legal department is asking to seek the authority to abate these as nuisances? Anyone? Seeing none. Board, could I have a motion?
I'll move.
Can move?
A, B, C, D.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none.
Seven yes?
Could we have a motion to adjourn as the Board of Health and reconvene as city council?
Move.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we now sit as city council. I would refer you now to. Our hearing items, items forty-five and forty-six were withdrawn at. All right. 46 is a request from the applicant to continue to January 9th. So we will vote on that. It's a request of Hugh Nunjan to rezone 1435 University Avenue from R3, multifamily residential and limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial, to allow for retail development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial. The roll call contains alternatives for denial or approval. And the applicant has requested to continue to January 9th city council meeting. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Do we know what they're trying to accomplish by continuing the hearings? It's been continued since early fall.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. We've had several meetings with the applicant, suggesting that they make contact with an adjoining property owner to obtain some additional land for the rezoning. They've not obtained any agreements that I'm aware of, but we received a call about 3:30 today that they were unable to be here.
So they're actually trying to acquire more land so that then...
Yeah, it would make the property more suitable for the commercial development that they're proposing. And that was a recommendation of the Plan and Zoning Commission and staff at that hearing, so.
So would P&amp;Z have a recommended approval, had they had more land?
If they bring in more land, they would need to go back to the Planning Commission, yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Following that clarification, we have a motion.
Mike, just one comment I might make. If you could encourage them to kind of move forward. I know they've kind of been passive in getting that land acquired or what they're going to do. And as with the other issue that got removed from our agenda, I mean, constantly continuing it in hopes that they'll, one day buy the property probably isn't real exciting to the council.
Yeah. The staff was prepared tonight to recommend just denial of the request. It's our understanding they don't intend to immediately build a building on the property. And if it were denied, they could come back in within a year and ask for a rezoning of the property. Or add more land would make it a materially different application, and there wouldn't be a one-year delay. So I guess on January 9th, if there's not an agreement, we would, again, recommend denial of the rezoning.
And I would agree with that. But tonight, I would go ahead and move item 46 to be continued.
Okay.
Six, yes?
All right. Item 47 is on a request from Imperial Properties to rezone 4141 East 14th Street from C2, general retail and highway-oriented commercial, to M1, light industrial, for a chrome plating operation. Plan and Zoning Commission recommends denial. Roll call contains the alternatives for denial or approval. Anyone here to speak on this item? Mr. Ludwig.
Mayor, County, Members of the Council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. If we could go to the Imperial, or I'm sorry, the overhead. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of East 14th Street and northeast Aurora Avenue. It's a split zone properly currently. This adjoining parcel next to the rezoning is currently zoned M1, and it contains parking that's located just to the east of the building. The entire building that's on the property is currently zoned C2. They are requesting for a land use plan amendment from a commercial auto-oriented, small-scale strip development to a general industrial classification, then rezoning of the C2 portion of the property to an M1 light industrial zoning. This is the existing building that's on the property, and then the parking that's occurring also on the property. We have a site sketch that they did submit. Majority of that parking area was shown in this vicinity. This far portion of the property that's shown on their site plan is the existing M1 zone portion of the property. As far as consent cards, we only received one card, and that was in opposition to the request. The Plan and Zoning Commission was very concerned. Basically, the occupancy of the building has been without a certificate of occupancy. They occupied the building without obtaining the necessary permits. The chrome plating operation involves some significant chemicals and materials within the building that are required by fire code to be stored in a very safe and secure manner. That is not occurring on the property that we are aware of currently. This business did relocate from another existing operation in Des Moines. They are downsizing their operations. They indicated at the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting that they have not been conducting any chrome plating operations since they were obviously notified of the zoning violation. But there are still concerns about the storage of the chrome plating chemicals and materials on the property. It was unanimous...
Have you had any problems with this company before not being compliant?
There exist other operations within the city, not that I'm aware of. On this property, the owner of the property has had numerous zoning violations on this and the adjoining property through the years. It was a unanimous recommendation from the Plan and Zoning Commission for denial of the rezoning request. So it would require a six-sevenths vote of the city council to approve the rezoning.
So how long would they have then to move the business?
Or to bring it in compliance? And it doesn't sound like they can bring it in compliance, so.
Not without the zoning, they can't. If they don't obtain the zoning that they need, they would need to cease immediately, and we would take action to do so.
Michael?
Yes.
The firm that you've had the problems with is Imperial Properties?
Correct.
Who is the owner of the property, but the less E is whom? I mean, Imperial's not doing chrome plating.
Correct. The applicant or the owner or operator of the business is here to speak tonight, but it's a chrome plating operation. And I'm sorry, I don't have that name right in front of me. I believe it was in the staff report.
But, Mike, the, I read, I guess, in one of the documents, that they're contracting out the chrome plating. So the issue still would be the storage of the potentially dangerous materials that are in the building, correct?
My understanding is the reason they're contracting that out is because they can't conduct the operations on this premise because of zoning at this time.
Okay. And they've been there at this site since 1993, is that correct?
No, not since 1993. That I'm aware of.
Oh. They had moved from someplace to...
Yes. I believe they've only been on this site a short time.
So had there been a complaint filed?
I'm not certain how the issue came before the city staff's attention. The zoning enforcement officer has been actively pursuing the zoning violation, and their remedy was to apply for rezoning.
Okay.
Mike, if you would be available, if we have further need for clarification, we might as well proceed with the hearing and see if we, the applicant...
I do have a question for Mike while he's up here. Under your applicable additional information at the planning and zoning under number 4 2020 Community Character Plan?
Mm-hmm.
It says the proposed rezoning to the M1 district with no limitations is not compatible. What if there were limitations put on it? Would it be compatible then, or is it any M1 zoning at all is not compatible?
It would just depend on the individual rezoning request and what conditions they were proposing to agree to. One additional item, I did note that in the staff report or the letter from the Plan and Zoning Commission, Tammy Jacobs of Chrome Reflections is the, was the operator that spoke to the Plan and Zoning Commission. I believe they're here this evening.
Any other questions, council? All right. Let's go ahead and proceed. Anyone here to speak on item 47?
Hello, I'm Tammy Jacobs.
All right. Tammy, we'd ask you to step up and give us your name and address for the record, because it goes on our record as part of the hearing.
All right.
Anyone else that's going to speak on this item this evening? We'd ask that you come to the south side and behind Tammy, who's going to make our initial presentation here. So we get an idea or a sense about how many people are here to speak.
I'm Tammy Jacobs, 2404 East 11th, here in Des Moines. And we have actually been in business since 1982. And we were on East Grand, 1700 East Grand, for five or six years. Then we moved from that location to the Pomerance Building, 1930 Easton Boulevard. And that is where we were up until 2009. Our main reasoning, we had leased for 20 years. She didn't want to sell the building. Industry had changed. It was way oversized, and we could not keep up with the upkeep of that size of facility is really why we moved. Never met Bill Moyer in my life. Just, you know, had no idea we had to research the property that we were looking to go into. I mean, we did look at the city's assessor site, and it said C3, M1. We assumed it was either or. You know, we're really not out to hurt anyone, but we need to be able to conduct plating there. You know, it's a specialized industry that we do. We have a lot of rare pieces. And right now, the owner is trucking stuff to a place in south Missouri. And it's a small shop. The guy's letting him help him run it, trying to do us a favor until we can get back up and going. But ultimately, that is not our goal. I think we did a mirror frame for you, Mr. County, a nickeled mirror frame from your first store, maybe?
Might have.
Mm-hmm. And we also did the work on the Pope County Heritage Gallery doors. I know you guys were having to send them out of state, have them just paint stripped and worked on. And I believe that was a pretty big savings. And I do have customers from out of state that have written some letters. And I also have one job in particular that I'm really proud of and a little bit concerned of. We have a 1958 Oldsmobile J2 convertible that the gentleman lives in Switzerland. And he has jobbed, brought the car to Iowa. It's being restored in Britt, Iowa, so that we can do the plating. And he's got a couple of pieces that are, you know, the only two in the world. And I really don't want to pack them up and have him hop in a car and drive a couple hundred miles to get them plated, you know? And that's kind of where we are. We think we're a unique and unique business. There's maybe two other plating shops in the state, and they're really not, they don't really do the kind of work that we do. Our basic work is restoration of, you know, antiques, collectibles, rare cars, you know, mirror frames, things you can't replace. We do a lot of stuff for the Sherman Hills area, you know, the old bathroom plumings and things like that. And we do, we do get a lot of work from out of state.
So what is your role with the company?
You know, I pretty much do anything. I handle the front. I do business quotes, calls. I'm actually Russ's wife, and he's the sole proprietor.
Okay. And how many employees actually are at the business?
We have five full-time employees, and then we also have three part-time.
Okay. And how long have you been in this site?
We've been in this building since 2009. We started moving there in August of 2009.
Okay.
And I don't know if I give you...
Sure. Go ahead.
I'll move to receive and file the documents.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Received it. Thank you.
I'm Russell McKean. 2404 East 11th, Des Moines. I'm the owner of Chrome Reflections. Tammy's my wife, like she said. We've gotten a lot smaller, actually. We're not, we don't have a lot of trucks coming and going out of our place. We don't have a lot of semis, you know? We used to have some coming in at the other shop. Like she said, we downsized, and like she said, we never heard of Bill Moyer to have moved in there. And that seemed to be our reflection of who we are, but it's not really. I guess, all I got to say is it'd be a financial burden on us to have to move. We'd have to close the doors, you know? We had no idea the zoning and all the, when we moved in our other building 20 years ago, there wasn't all the occupancy permits and this and that. We moved on the spur of the moment because we had to, and that's where we ended up.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Russ? Russ, thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Dean Vibler. I live out at Granger, out east of Granger, 10222 Northwest 121st Street, Granger, Iowa. I'm a chemist. The 46 years I've been restoring, 50 years come next spring. I do frame up restorations of cars. Any of you, any of you went to Salisbury House's show in September two years ago? That car of mine won first place. It won first place.
Want to put it in, under the overhead there?
It won, and this is...
Anything right here?
Yep. Every bit of stainless and chrome on that car was done by Chrome Reflections in 1989 at one of their previous locations. That's the reason that car won. I'm just one example of probably close to 1,000 people that could be standing here if they knew of this meeting to tell you the same thing. As a chemist, I can tell you that chrome reflections is not a dirty business. No chroming industry is a dirty business if you run it right. Somebody to say that those chemicals are so dangerous doesn't know what they're talking about. You've got gasoline in your garage, and it's more flammable and more dangerous than any chemical that they have on the property. A lot of this has been blown out of hand and things that don't get said that should be said here. Why aren't, is Bill Moyer here? Why don't you guys have Bill Moyer come in here and take care of his problem, which would remove their problem completely? They're not the owner. They're the tenant. They're the victim. And like they say, they didn't know Bill Moyer. Hardly anybody does. But he is, I'll tell you this, I'm not related to them. He is a crook and been a crook since I've known him since high school in the 60s. And you know it, too. You've tried to get him. Why isn't he here, like I said?
I asked Bill not to come.
Oh, okay. Maybe that's a good thing. Maybe that's a good thing. Anyway...
John told me to ask Bill not to come, so we did.
A good chrome plating operation is a very clean business. To have it zoned M1 versus C2 makes no bearing, has no bearing on it at all. You look at the building, it's clean on the outside. Do you see garbage on the outside and back? No. Do you see a discharge down the drain of chromium and anything else? They don't deal with this, but lead, arsenic. Do you see a discharge going into the wastewater treatment system? No, because there is no discharge in a chrome plating. You add water, you've got electric current, you've got an anode, a cathode. The current travels in a polar water system. The chemicals, if you're chroming or nickel or whatever, they go from one side to the piece. The piece takes the chemicals. There is no hazardous problem. That's the real chemistry of it, and that's the knowledge that you guys don't have. Back to the business at hand. Why would you ruin a business in town that has employees that make a living there so they can go home and feed their families, so their families can go to, go to any business out to Jordan Creek or Valley West Mall or Merle Hay and spend money and live here, instead of going after Bill Moyer, the problem in the first place? Because he never got a permit for them. It's not their, they're the tenant. They're not, it's not their responsibility to know that that didn't have a correct permit in the first place. I don't understand why Plan and Zoning turned it down, because it's right next door to, you go across the street, I think it's M1. So you're right on the border, anyway. And then northeast 14th Street. What else is there? You don't see houses up and down that street. You don't see fancy apartment buildings. You see business. And like, it gets right back to M1, C2. It's a clean building. There's no discharge. You go inside, you ever been in a chroming operation? There's no smell in there when you go in. I've been there plenty of times. So have everybody else. These people have been here. There's no smell in there, like, gee, I shouldn't be breathing this. Barrett Plating, I use Barrett Plating for my zinc, which is one of the best places in the country. And they're out, they're in the county. You go in Barrett Plating, and you breathe, and you think, gee, maybe I shouldn't be in here. There's a big difference between chroming and zinc plating. There's a big difference between chroming and zinc plating. Business-wise too, why do I take my stuff to Chrome Reflections? There are only so many chrome places in the country, probably a couple hundred. If you remove them from business, I've got to drive a round trip of 600 to 800 miles to take any piece I want, even a single piece, to get it re-chrome, to get it done correctly. Sure, there are plenty of chroming operations, but they don't all do the same work. If I could, if I thought about it, I could have brought some pieces to prove the point. You take it to the wrong chromer and you've got a car like they're talking about and you get the pot metal pieces back, which is zinc and some other alloys mixed together. And you'll see grind marks underneath the chrome. That's not what you want. You want a nice, flat, shiny surface. There's quality. Why do I use them? Because of quality. Is that a belt for me?
Yeah.
I want to remind everybody that the, the applicant here is Imperial Properties. So while they're not here, I understand your dilemma, but let's, let's hear from the rest of the speakers.
I'm Barb Carstens. My address is 2643 Morton Avenue. And I do the accounting for them, their, their payroll and stuff. And when they had to move in 2009, they had to shut down for two months. They probably lost over $40,000 in income alone. And that was the first time in years that they had to have the guys collect unemployment.
And we don't have a bunch of money in the bank to move again.
Yeah, yeah. Besides losing that money, they, it also cost almost $15,000 just to get everything moved.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's John Pat Dorian, 1224 scenic circle, west of Des Moines.
You ever been in here before, John?
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. Hi, Diane. Yeah, I've been here before and I, I have a lot of compassion for what you're going through. Excuse me. It's difficult. And I know, I sat there dealing with the landlord and it's, he's been chased around the town forever. When I walked in, and I've had cars, motorcycles, and recently bicycle chromed over there, Chrome Reflections. But when I walked in, when they moved in over there and Tammy started telling me that I'm already having some difficulties with the landlord, I thought, oh, no. She had no idea who she was dealing with. And I'm just here tonight to encourage you to really not throw the baby out with the bathwater. She was going to have Bill here and I said, it may not be to your advantage to do that.
Good suggestion.
But they're really good chrome plating place. And it's the only one, only one around here. There's, I think there's another one or two in Iowa, but a lot of things, you don't, if you treasure enough or have enough value in it to, to have it replated, sometimes you don't want to sit, put it in a box and put it in the mail and send it away somewhere. You know, it's, it's so nice to be able just to, to drive across town and, and have it done right here locally. And they do excellent, excellent work. There's, I think she could have filled this council chamber, would have put out more people to come. But I'm just here to, to ask you to do, do all that you can. I'm not sure what you can do because you're dealing with a landlord that has caused so much grief for this community. And I think it's more than just Des Moines. I think there's other places where, so... But if you could just keep that in consideration, that they're good people, they do good work and they employ several people there. It's a, it's a family-owned business. Their kids go to school here in Des Moines and everything and they just, they kind of need a break. The landlord don't, but the tenant does. And that puts you in an awkward position, so I'm just here to hope that that can happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Raymond Harris, Sheldon, Iowa. I guess I've done business with Tammy and Russ for probably 25 years. And I just found out about their problem. I don't even know their landlord. I don't know anything about that or nothing. I'm just, I'm here and hoping that maybe somehow you can keep them running because quality, quality, quality. You can't get that kind of work. And like I said, they're, they're like family. I mean, we've done work with them for, business with them for probably 20, 25 years. I just feel sorry for them and what it cost them to move last time. And I know they can't do it again. And if they, they can't do it again, I'm sure they're not going to be in business. It's going to hurt a lot of us, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Dennis Garland. I live at 5109 Southwest 17th Street in Des Moines. And I wanted the chance to talk on their behalf as well. Like everybody has said, they do such good quality. And I remember responding to an ad that was in the paper like in 82 or something like that. And that's when I met, probably one of their first customers. But just done a lot of business over the years with them. My brother, both of my brothers, just like family, just like you said. And I have dealt with companies before. I started using them and you would have to box something up, ship it out. You might not even get back what you sent. And a good chance that you weren't happy with it. So it's so good and so convenient to have them here. And I know for a fact that they've always employed four or five people, you know, at least. And I think sometimes two shifts. And it would just be a big loss to the community, in my opinion, if they had to shut down. So, thank you.
Dennis, thank you.
Gary Berkerstrand, Slater, Iowa. I've been doing business with Chrome Reflections since they first moved to town. And what was your address over here off, over by the AEE dairy?
1700 East Grand.
All right. Anyway, and the name of the game is quality. You can't get it anywhere else. One of the largest economic draws for Des Moines, Iowa, is the Heartland Nationals Car Show at the Fairgrounds. Brings a lot of revenue to Des Moines due in part to chrome and paint jobs. And that's, that's a big deal for a lot of us, shipping, quality. I don't know. They're good people. They're honest people. Their kids are on the honor roll. It's just a shame that they got mixed up with who they did. Thank you.
Terry, thank you. Anybody else here to speak this evening on this item? Seeing none. I'm not sure what the council wants to do on this particular item, but Bob, I wonder if there's some way that in terms of zoning, if the applicant could be these people and the grant be given to them while they occupy it?
I don't know either. I certainly don't want to do any favors for Mr. Moyer. I would think that they ought to put some pressure on him to see if he can't get that building in a condition that could have a certificate of occupancy. And that they may have, need a little time to do that, whether that would work or not with, with Mr. Moyer. You know, a lot of us has dealt with him in the past and we know what his, his reputation precedes him. I would, I would like to see if we could defer this a little bit, give them a little time to see if they can put some pressure on him or if they could find another location. I know they're talking about the cost of relocating. And it sounds like they, you know, they're good operators. I, I'm convinced that they do a good job over there. The property on, on East 14th, they keep it nice and clean. And I think our inspectors in it have to work with them to see what they can do about the, keeping the, the rotation of the air and that and controlling of the, of the chemicals. But I, I really think they run a nice business there. But, you know, back we go to Moyer and that's, that really has a problem.
Mr. Manager, do you have a thought?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And in line with what Mr. Mahaffey said, if, if the council is so inclined and you continue this item to the next meeting, we'd be happy to work with the business out here to see if there's some way that we can help them move this forward. And I understand there's some cost issues involved in terms of making the necessary improvements. And maybe we can link them up with Terry Verbrick and look at a 504 loan. I don't know what all's available there, but if, if it's the council's inclination, and I'm looking to Phil and, and Mike to see if maybe we could sit down with the tenant, with the business and offer whatever suggestions we have and then report back to you. But it's kind of up to you about how you want to pursue on the zoning issue. It just seems to me, given the testimony, that if that's the council's desire, we'd be happy to, to spend some time working with them on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I am very supportive of working with the company to see what we can do to assist them. I, you know, I, I think we need to look at some different options here. I'm also very aware of your landlord and the problems. I mean, I drive up and down East 14th Street and I think he was the worst thing that ever happened to it. I mean, I cannot believe all of the properties and how he just allowed them to fall apart. And it's just been horrible for 20 years, probably longer. So when we, we very, I very much want to help you as a company, but we don't want to do anything to line his pockets, to be as blunt as you can get about it. But I think that there are some other options through the city that, you know, you're the type of business that we want to help you. We want to see you grow. And let's talk about how we can do that, that is good for you and it's good for the community as a whole. So it sounds like everybody's, you know, thinking this along the same lines. And we just need to get, you know, the appropriate people to sit down at the table and work through some different options that would be out there.
Yeah. Mayor? Is there, Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes.
I've got, I've got some concerns on this. To start with, the neighborhood was not in opposition of this rezoning. We only have one property that is in opposition. Immediately east is M1. I'm suspect immediately north across Aurora might be M1 and suspect across East 14th and West might be M1. Being the past president of Iowa Street Rogers, you can imagine what I've heard. But I got a phone call today from the Auba Museum in Ankeny, which has one of the top Chevrolet collections in the United States. And they expressed their concern. They do not ship for chroming. They like having somebody local that they can take their chrome to and oversee the re-chroming process. And Andy even told me that if he can't do it there, he's going to Omaha and he doesn't like driving to Omaha several times just for one piece of chrome. I think we all realize there's extenuating circumstances with the property owner. And I'm totally supportive of this, going to economic development and CD to see what we can work out on this. We've heard from some folks here and I think the support is there. I've never heard of any problems with Chrome Reflections as far as polluting or, or doing anything like that. I used to live a couple blocks from you when you were on Easton and there were never any complaints there other than people breaking your windows, I think, so... I just wanted to add that in there. I do think this needs to go back. And I don't know if we'd need a report back at the next council meeting or take a little bit longer if necessary, but...
Phil, some thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Phil Delafield, Community Development Director, speaking to you tonight as your building official. As with most operations, there are building code regulations that apply. In this case, the category of use that is applicable to a chrome plating operation is different than what the building currently has. That's the underlying issue here. It can be done safely. There are code issues that need to be addressed. Community development is supportive. If you choose to recommend a continuance for us to explore those options, make sure that they're within the budget of the applicant, see where the opportunities are. There are solutions that are available, but there are some solutions that need to be done, to need to be found in order for the building to be safely used and a certificate of occupancy obtained. It's not, not doable. It's just that there are some issues that have to be addressed.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Phil.
Mayor, could I, could I say one more thing? It's for Dean. Don't be angry at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those people, they have an extremely hard job due to advise us. And it was unanimous. And they're just trying to do what's best for the community. And I don't want you to think that they're just a bunch of people that just... Okay.
But they also have had a lot of history with the property owner.
That was obvious and...
What I don't understand is why neither you, if somebody can't put the guy in jail.
All right. Mayor, Mayor, if we proceed it as I think Bob and others have, have proposed, I mean, are they temporarily in compliance as we go through this? I mean, there's not...
No.
So how does, how does that work in terms of, because I'm supportive of this, I just want to make sure that, you know, 30 days or 60 days from now it doesn't come back to bite them because they continue to operate somewhere.
Well, I don't think, could, could one of the owners come forward real quickly and...
My thought is if we needed to do something to allow that today, I'd like that to be part of our action if Mr. Lester Clark had some idea for us on how to...
It's, it's my understanding that you're not plating at the moment. You're buffing and you're doing some other stuff, but you're not plating.
No.
You would like to get in a situation where you could plate.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we'll have a lot more control, a lot more, it's a lot more profitable for us.
Okay. And I don't know, and Mike, I guess you would be the one that, that would have to answer this. I mean, to accomplish what you're talking about, Mr. Coleman, I don't know that they can do that. But Mike, do you have some thoughts?
The chemicals are no more hazardous sitting there like they are right now.
Well, right.
Okay. Then use them.
It's good, it's, Phil kind of spoke to this, but it's my understanding they have an H occupancy under the building code, which is a hazardous occupancy. They would have to make renovations or alterations to bring their systems into compliance for the plating operation. I would not recommend allowing them to do plating until those, those mechanisms are in place. You know, they, they've been allowed to continue non-plating operations on the property in the interim and they can still do that. The, the issue with the zoning is, is that the owner of the property would have to sign and agree to any conditions that are placed on the zoning of the property. So unless they're able to either acquire the property and be the owner of it and be able to sign those conditions, I, I don't know whether we'll be able to get Mr. Moyer to sign any of those conditions. The other issue is I'm not certain what their lease provisions are as to who's responsible for alterations to the building or tenant improvements, et cetera. And I think if this comes back on the ninth, that at a minimum, there would need to be a condition, that there's some sort of a financing plan or something presented that, you know, clearly identifies who will be making the improvements to the building and that there's proof that there's, there's money for that. I think they've indicated tonight that they, they are having difficulty with finances to move again. I don't know what the improvements to the building would cost, but there, there should probably be some analysis on that.
Okay. So if, if we could get the, the improvements and give them a list, Phil, of the things they have to do and they could get price specific so you could figure out exactly what that is. I think the problem that we have as a council is we don't want to put the city in a libelous situation where we grant somebody an opportunity to, to do a business that we've found that is out of compliance. And we would then inherit some liability, I would think. Plus, you'd have those that are out there in the community that would say, we'll let this guy do it. And I would guess that probably not everybody that is in business operates the same way that you folks do. And so we would have a, a bit of a situation. So if we could, as expeditiously as possible, meet with these folks and quickly, let's see what they need to do to get in compliance so that they could operate and, and then get this, this resolved. I think that that seems to be the, the wish of, from what I'm hearing here tonight from the council, if we could do that. Either Mr. Coleman, Hensley, did you have something else you want to say?
No.
Okay.
Agree with everything.
Yeah.
Are we ready for, is Bill for here?
Yeah. If there's a motion that...
Okay. I, I would move that a staff works with these people and determine what is needed and bring it back to council. I don't know whether we need 30 days or what do we need for them to, staff to, to get with them. And probably it's not going to be a real easy task to go through and identify everything that's needed, but...
Perhaps you can continue it to the next meeting and we'll see what we can do by that time.
We may have to continue it to a meeting after that too, but, okay. I'll move to continue it to the next meeting and have staff work with them.
Yes. Here we can put together by the next meeting. It'll be right after the, our first meeting in January.
10th. No, excuse me.
January 9th.
January 9th.
January 9th. So I think that's your motion, right? Continue to January 9th, and let's see if we can't come back with a solution that helps to get them doing your work.
In the meantime, though, you can't... No chroming? And do you have to continue with what you've been doing? No additional work with chroming or anything?
Seven, yes? Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Phil, do you want to meet with them out in the hall and see if we can't immediately start working on what we need to do? Thanks. Okay. Item 48 is on the demolition at Southern Meadows Phase 2, 2800 Southeast 8th Street. Resolution improving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as DeCarlo Demolition Company. Dan DeCarlo, President, $137,900. Council Communication number 11-763 is approving the contract and bond and a permission to sublet. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? 48 and 48A. Seeing none?
I'll move 48 and 48A. It's a great project. Look forward to the demo.
Seven, yes?
Item 49 is on the Southeast Connector Demo and Site Prep, Southeast 9th to Southeast 15th Street. Resolution improving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and receive and file the bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Elder Corporation. Jared R. Elder II, President, $1,059,999.99. Council Communication number 11-759 is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. And B is approving the professional services agreement with Kirkham Michael and Associates, Inc. for construction phase services not to exceed $84,000. Council Communication number 11-764. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item?
It's like a Price is Right number there.
Yeah, it does.
Hey, we're down to the penny.
And not to exceed, right?
It's a great project. Certainly something we need to continue with, that's for sure.
Yeah, I'll move 49 and 49A and B.
Has been moved. Any discussion?
The only comment I would make is it came in over the construction estimate of a couple hundred thousand dollars, so I'm assuming that we have that in place.
Yes, you do. In terms of the money, you mean?
But...
Correct.
But there was a number of them that were over. All of them that bid were over, yeah.
Seven, yes?
All right. I want to wish everybody here a happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 We said adjourn. Thank you all for attending.